It's a little past ten o'clock, or twenty-five minutes past ten o'clock, and I apologize for being late. I want to call this meeting to order. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Everyone being present. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 If I may, I'm going to, well, claims.
Ms. Garares, are the claims in order?
Yes, the claims are in order. Nevermind, I need to get through.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion second to pass. Discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports and the agenda, I'd like to go ahead and get the budget. It was very difficult working on the budget this year. We had a loss in value in the county of a little over a hundred million dollars. I think it was to the tune of about a hundred and four million dollars, a hundred and three million dollars, which converts to about $700,000 loss in revenues at eighty-eight percent collections for the county. This has been going on for the past three years on account of the mineral value. Our real estate goes up, but our mineral continues to go down. So, we did not have very many areas in which we could cut, but we did find some without touching personnel or salaries. As you well know, a lot of other taxing entities in the county have increased their taxes. I don't believe in that. I don't like to increase taxes. So, I feel there's always some way, or you try every way you can to balance the budget without raising taxes. There were a couple of areas that we have on the agenda for approval that I explored. One was the bridge revenues. The other was the gas revenues. And I talked to their supervisors about what could be done. And with their help, we were able to come up with a little more revenue. So anyhow, I guess in a nutshell, tax rates will remain exactly as they were. No one will get cut. No one will lose any salary. The bad part is that there will be no raises. But I think compared to other neighboring counties where cuts in personnel have happened, cuts in salaries have happened across the board, I think we were extremely fortunate that we were able to get to where we are right now. So, the budget, the commissioners, you all have had them. I don't know if you all have any questions on them, but everything pretty much remained the same. We did have to fund the public defender office also, but I think in the long run, that's going to save us some money. But I don't know if you all have any questions on the budget, commissioners?
Is that, we want to pass it right now, your honor?
Yes. I just moved. Second. Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
The next thing that we have is the tax rate. And even though the tax, the bottom line remains the same, I did shift some monies around from general to road and bridge. Road and bridge last year was at .2174. I'm recommending that we go up to .2326. And road and bridge was at .541. I'm recommending that we go down to .5258. The bottom line will remain the same at .7584. But this is to make up for differences that the road and bridge needs, always needs more money, and we're well aware of that. And every year, we have to move monies from general to road and bridge to balance. We cannot move money from road and bridge to general. So that's the reason we've done that, but we need to get it closer. And we're doing it a little at a time every year so we don't fall into the road back rate. But the bottom line is the same. What people were paying last year, they will continue to pay this year, with the exception if they had reappraisals and their values went up. Or down, either way. But that's the tax rate that I'm recommending. But I did leave the one cent for the INS and one cent for the drainage district.
I just want to know that we approved the current tax rate with the changes that you have mentioned from road and bridge, from a general fund to road and bridge.
Second. There's a motion in a second discussion. Oliver, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Again, I want to thank the court sincerely because of all the, you know, we were able to do this thanks to the commissioners. You know, they tightened their belts and, you know, they worked with me for the last three years. We've had some really good arguments about it, but it's all in good faith, you know, trying to do what's right for our constituents and our people. And I do want to thank the court for that.
Thanks, Judge.
Okay. I guess now, if there's anyone from out of town that wants to come before the court at this time, or if not, we'll go down our agenda. Under gas, Mr. Alvarado.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, my report is before you in your folders. I really have nothing else to add to it. We're preparing our staff for some classes that we're due to take in October. And we're preparing some of the lines, wells, and relief wells that are going to be tested during the month of October, too. So, that's about it. Any questions?
Mr. Alvarado. The other day, I got a, I think it was a mistaken call from a company wanting to know some balance on payments that have not been done on the gas system. I said, "I'm not in charge of the gas system." That there were monies owed that haven't been paid, maybe three weeks ago or more.
Yes.
Yeah, I can answer.
I said, "Look, I said, 'Look, I'm not in charge of the gas.'"
Or you want to go ahead and?
The auditor's office, or?
Commissioners, an employee that is no longer with us missed two payments.
She was the one that made it?
Yeah. No, she didn't make the payments.
Oh.
She didn't submit it. But they're there, and we already talked to the company.
Okay. They called me. I said, "I don't know anything that's news to me."
Yeah, we, she missed, she missed a couple of invoices, and she didn't submit them in time.
Okay. Yeah, what happened on that, one of our employees did not make the POs, I believe, for those people to get paid. And then, what upset me with the company was that, for example, if we get a light bill at the house and we don't pay it, electric bill, the following month, it says balance due plus this month. These people didn't do that. They would send balance due only for that month. So they were not letting us know that we were delinquent. And this, of course, is very disturbing because I have no way of knowing, you know, that something is owed if they don't tell me, or Mr. Alvarado, because, you know, apparently someone didn't do the PO. But we, I think we've made arrangements where they're going to get paid.
Yes, sir. We've talked to the company.
He called me. I said, "I don't know anything about it." And he told me, he gave me a pretty amount of money, about seventy or sixty thousand dollars.
It's close to a hundred.
Well, see, I don't know anything about it. You called the auditor's office, or called?
No, we did clear with the auditors, and they were missing those statements, too. So, it was checked and triple-checked. We all.
You're calling a wrong place, man.
Okay. Thank you. Transfer station?
Can I say it after? Their fax machine is over there.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay.
For the month of August, we had a plus, and we hadn't had that in a while, five thousand four hundred and thirty-six with fifty-three cents. The month before, we had had a small. It was just eighty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, but we made up for it, more than. Is there any questions?
Any questions on the transfer station?
Are the bills paid?
Pardon me?
Are all the bills paid?
Yes, sir, they're paid.
Okay. I was wondering, was one of there, I was telling you, a hundred thousand?
We do need to have a workshop on the tires.
You can have it whenever you all want to.
Okay, I don't know when it's convenient. I was really tied up with the budget, but now that it's done, we need to have a workshop as to how we're going to handle that situation because that's what's killing the landfill or the transfer station.
Yes, that's what's killing us. It's all the tires that we have to send out and it.
And we don't bill for them. That's the problem, see, because they're coming from us. But go ahead and get with the commissioner's secret when it's convenient.
Okay. Yeah, I had told Commissioner Garza had called to inquire about the large tires.
I'm taking care of my tires, Your Honor. I've already got more than five thousand tires.
Yeah, but we still have to dispose of them.
I know, I know. And I know you have to dispose of them, but it's not cheaper than to pay them, to send them one by one.
Yes.
Okay?
Is it cheaper to send them cut, or?
Well, because they only accept them cut, Commissioner, and they have to be quartered.
It costs you more to send them on the whole tire.
Not a lot.
There's a new guy coming in. We got a call from a guy. He's supposed to come in, and he wants to install, just like everybody, to come and buy the tires, not to buy from him, so he can ship them to, I don't know, somewhere in another nation to do some kind of product up there. And what he's coding, he wants to put a machine to cut off the wires, something like that, and we'll charge. And I haven't really figured it out, something like twenty-eight dollars a ton to ship them. We pay him twenty-eight dollars a ton. He'll take care of them, cut them, and then ship them into Asia or somewhere up there. So I sent him to come by and give us the presentation. I don't know how true it is, but.
That would be good, because that would be, that would be cheaper.
Well, he said that he wanted to come in and install a plant here, and he would put them in containers, compress them, put them in containers, and he's got a contract with other countries somewhere, and at twenty-eight dollars a ton.
See, the thing is, the thing is whether we cut them or we send them whole, it's still costing us a lot of money. This year, from October through August, we have, or you all have brought in sixty-three thousand tires. I mean, that's excessive. That is just unheard of. Never had we gotten this kind of numbers before. So the landfill cannot continue to operate like that because even if we pay a dollar, which we pay more than that.
We pay more than that.
That's sixty-three thousand dollars a year that we're losing.
Sixty-three thousand tires came into the landfill since when?
From?
October.
October fifteenth through August sixteenth.
That's in a period of, what, ten months?
Sixty, what, sixty-four thousand?
Sixty-three thousand.
And it's all?
(Spanish) It's too much.
I've got the numbers. I didn't want to say them, but.
Well, you got the number, where they come from, each precinct?
I'll read them out.
All right, go ahead.
Precinct one, one thousand one hundred and seventy-five. Precinct two, twelve thousand six seventy-nine. Precinct three, forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one.
No, that's not.
Precinct four, one thousand ninety-three.
No, let me tell you, I guarantee you, that's a wrong number.
Those are the numbers.
No, no, señor. No, no, no. Is that the one that's cut? I guarantee you, that's no way in heaven. Mira, déjame decir una cosa. For the last, the last five months, yo te garantizo que no más de cuatro thousand.
I'm just reading a number.
I'll tell you something, it is way off, I guarantee you, and I can bet a thousand to one, that there's no way. And my foreman's got the count, sir.
Well, the good thing is that.
No, yo tengo el recibo aquí.
The people that go sign that they delivered so many tires.
No, tenemos la lista y tenemos el recibo, pero I'll get the number so you can.
We'll have a workshop in.
No, es que te lo he dicho, mandarlo a la escuela para que te take, best course. No, 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 no. Estamos hablando que, estoy diciendo que con cinco meses, we're doing a cleanup of the county, but there's no way that's what it's at, a thousand tires. Si no te, mira, he wanted to receive only a hundred tires a day, that's all he would do, and turn you back. That's all he would allow you to receive.
I'm just reading a number.
I mean. I guarantee you, that's a number.
It's our bookkeeper who submitted the numbers, according to the receipts that every person signs when they leave the transfer station.
Well, let's have a workshop.
Let's have a workshop.
Yes, sir. Texas, yes, sir? Mr. Cantos?
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Morning.
Doce mil, yo.
No, doce sí te lo quedó, cuarenta y siete mil no. Un año vale la pena.
Pues fue lo que fue, un año.
No, no, pero, pero.
Ese es parejo, no más imagínate, parejo.
Todos los días. Todos los días, todos los días. Si lo de vida. Cuántos días de trabajo que tenemos. O al año. Si te figura.
(Spanish)
We multiply them by four.
I know what, I know how many tires we got. There's no way that.
Commissioners and judge, present to you the report for August. Again, it's divided the same way it is. The legal sheet is the recap of the activity that was done by the tax office for the county and the entities that we collect. The front pages gives a breakdown by the divisions, road and bridge, MNO, drainage district, et cetera. For the month of August, we collected four hundred and, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars, which included about forty-some thousand in fees and redemptions. The bulk, we had a good, good month for delinquent taxes, but again, individual reports are there. Aside from that, I gave you a recap through August where it shows that, in essence, if you're looking at our eighty-eight percent levy, that, or the percentage that the county was expecting to collect. By the end of August, we were at ninety-eight percent. So that means that you're going to meet your target of what it was.
It was ninety-eight percent, yeah, but it was the current of the projected.
Of the projected.
We were projecting eighty-eight, and you already went to ninety-eight.
No, no, we, in other words, we're actually at eighty-six, eighty-six percent.
Okay, so you got two percent.
We got two percent to go, which in September, we're going to, we're going to do okay. When I mentioned the ninety-eight percent, we were at ninety-eight percent of the goal. But we should, we should do okay. Again, what helped us, like on the delinquents, is we're at a hundred and ten percent. The office, the commissioners, and the tax collector, the delinquent tax.
They went over.
Did good, yes. Yeah. Yolita, as I left, the people are being more receptive to the letters and stuff that they're getting. We are aggressively, or I guess I shouldn't say aggressively, we are actively also looking at businesses that have fallen behind on their taxes and arremandolos because if we're doing that to our people that own homes, we need to do that to the businesses también. If their doors are open for business, that means that they're doing okay. So the burden should be shared amongst all of them, and I'm very happy with the work that is being done on that.
And I agree with you. If I pay, everybody pays. I mean.
The office in Roma?
They've been doing okay. We've been a little slow in La Victoria. One of the problems is, we have one staff person, no más, you know, and so then, that person does have to take care of a chronic illness, so there are times when she has to leave and the office, the office closes. In Roma, we have one and a half person, and so también, if there's an issue with that full-time person having to be out, we end up with half. We get complaints. I mean, and I don't know if they've come to you, I mean, they'll call me. Fui más a la vecina, they were closed, et cetera, and I try to explain to them what the situation is. You know, one recommendation that I'm going to have for Ameida.
In October, we'll have two, I mean, two persons there.
How's that?
In October.
No. I mean, the budget, the way it is, we have one person.
I'm not asking you to pay it. I'll pay it.
Oh, when that's the case, that'll, that'll help. You know, that'll help. We have one and a half person. My recommendation to Ameida was going to be, if we can only fully fund, because of the budget, one person, perhaps you should consider having your offices open only two or three days a week, full-time. But if we get.
We open every day.
Okay. If we get the support, if Ameida gets the support of the commissioners' court, you know, from each commissioner where they can put an extra person there, that should take care of it. I'm also trying to see if we can get somebody from Workforce Solutions. They sometimes have, ¿cómo se llama?, the youth employment, and see if they can at least help to file and stuff like that. They will not collect taxes or anything because they need to be bonded, but it would at least possibly help them, you know.
Yeah, but not on those collection stations because they don't have anything, anything to file. They just log in, collecting money, everything, and you don't want to take one of those, you know, you don't know what you're getting. I mean, I'm not talking bad about it, but you know, you could have something, a reliable person, and somebody, you don't want to have one of those people.
Well, that's, that's a good thing to put in. And like, again, this position, these people will not be available until after I'm gone, but it was just possibly a solution to that. The other material that I had there that's stapled together really kind of like relates to the effective tax rate and stuff like that, and I just compiled, you know, based on the reports, what the rates should be and stuff like that. The only thing that I forgot to put in here was what your rollbacks would have been, but it would have been eighty-three, so you're good. And you were able to stay within the budget, so it worked out.
So it means that this year, we're supposed to have a surplus in the budget, based on your collections of the expected revenue.
I don't know how your, I don't, this is my collections. I don't know how your expenditures are going. Depending if you maintain your, if you maintain your expenditures according to your budget, you'll have a surplus. If your expenditures exceed what you budgeted.
They shouldn't be. I mean, they should have stayed within their budget.
Yeah, but let me explain. See, the taxes that come in, that's just one phase of money that come into the county. There's a lot of other areas, the bridge, the gas, you know, all these others. If they don't bring in, we don't have, we have no surplus. I think we should have a little bit of fund balance this year. Not much, because we paid a million dollars or two million dollars, I don't know how much it was that we paid. How much? One-five, yeah. So if not, we would have had that fund balance.
But we will not, we don't have to borrow money for this year.
No, sir. Well, I don't think, did the money come in from the grants?
No. Of course, half a million, if that money comes in.
I had a very short conversation with the treasurer. He was asking me if there's going to be any money, like, well, there'll be some additional money coming in, but not that much. And I explained how much we deposited into the treasury this time, says that doesn't even cover one payroll.
Yeah.
And I said, "Because these are just taxes. Payroll consists of payroll that you have because of grants that come in to the different entities, to law enforcement, et cetera." So if we're behind on the grants coming in, that's going to create a problem because you can't expect the.
But they say that if we, let's say that we're late, let's say we're going to be late on the, on the grants coming in a week or two, but that money will make up.
Yes.
And we don't, in case we have to go to the bank and borrow five hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, whatever, that money is out there. It comes in, pays off, and we have, we're at zero balance. We don't have to.
Correct.
We don't know any money.
Correct. Well, and that is correct. Now, I don't know if that grant money will be coming in this week, do you know?
I.
We have requested, it's half a million dollars.
Everything is in.
We have already requested that half million.
We just stole the money. We're just waiting for it to come to come.
Yeah, if it comes in, we don't have to borrow anything. If it does not come in, then we're going to have to borrow and pay back as soon as that money comes in. But, but.
But at the end of the year, we didn't have to borrow any money.
Exactly. And we were able to meet payroll, every payroll.
And pay all the debts.
Everything, you know, and I know you all saw reports in the media that we didn't have any money, that we were broke and all this stuff. We never were, you know. The money was there, it was just coming in, it was trickling in. I think it was just, you know, just deployed to make Stark County look bad, but thanks to everyone working together, we didn't have to borrow anything, especially Ms. Garares. I want to thank her.
Yeah. Everybody did a great job. I mean, even though it was tight, you all were able to manage. Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Treasure and Mr. Pinn?
Just better, just better, Commissioner. Good morning.
Good morning.
You have the report in front of you. The general fund at the Vaga the thirty-first had only two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That is two million dollars less than last year. The general fund, the road and bridge, had forty-four thousand. That's not even enough for one-third of a payroll. It's three hundred thousand less than this, the same time, at this time, last year. Total catch from all sources and investments is at nine million or two-point-three million dollars less than last year.
Less?
Less. Less.
I don't understand your.
Debt service?
Okay, go ahead. We'll get to it.
Debt service, you do owe two-point-five million dollars less than last year, and we're at, at two-point-nine at this time. Such collaterals are fine. The amusement machine monies, at the Vaga, you have received a million and sixty thousand dollars. This is one-point-two million dollars less than last year at two-point-two-six-eight million. So it's at two million, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. And to this date, three-point-two million have been collected in amusement machine monies. That's eight-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand for precinct. I gave you a complete report. I'm here to answer any questions. We have an enormous dilemma as to how we're going to pay our employees on Friday. Mr. Rudy Montalvo sent them a memo explaining the check for being done on Saturday. We don't do checks on Saturday. We pay on Friday, and we have a legal obligation because we have to follow the federal guidelines as to when our payroll day is set at a federal level. The payroll has to be done Friday, and it's, I need the commissioner's court to understand that the payroll process begins on Tuesday. It's not like write a check on Friday and pay everybody off, and we're gone for the weekend. We have to transfer money from all departments or from our funds into a payroll clearing account. If the payroll clearing account does not have enough money, checks cannot be made. Also, the funds cannot be transferred to the payroll clearing account or clearing house, which in turn sends it over to the, to the employee that has the ACA. So it's a process that is necessary, and if somebody has a plan, I'm more than willing to hear about it, but as of right now, there's no money to pay on Friday.
As was discussed a little while ago, the money is there, it just hasn't been moved over to the clearing account. And the reason for that is we're waiting on that money to come in so we don't have to activate the loan. If it comes in, we don't have a problem. If it doesn't, we have money. If it doesn't, we have money, we have a one-million-dollar cash or credit line at the bank, so people will get paid. There's, there's no, the sky's not falling, you know, we, we have the money.
Okay, so, all you need to do, Judge, is before Friday, go to the bank and deposit where-
No, you have to deposit by tomorrow, not by Friday, tomorrow.
Quite tomorrow.
Because tomorrow is when the process starts about moving money. You can't just miraculously write the check, make the check, send the ACA, and in expectation that the money's gonna be there, that's called check hiding. We used to do it in the eighties, now it's illegal.
The bank said it could be done, so I take the bank's word.
As county treasurer, I'll tell you one thing.
Well, that's fine, you've already told us, we've been advised, you know, we've have the final say, not you, and that's what we're gonna do.
I'm the county treasurer, and I have the final say, if I make out checks, and I'm not gonna make out any checks.
Don't make them, don't make them, you don't want to, you, you explain to the employees why they're not getting paid.
I'm not gonna break the federal law, and you chose neither. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
I'm not the treasurer, but I'd just like to add something.
We know you're not the treasurer. Your tax collector, right?
The process starts this way. The issue of hiding a check happens when you actually issue the check, not when you've cut the check. Any good business will cut checks for what is anticipated to come on. This is what the court needs to do beginning on Tuesday, when we turn in our time sheets and stuff like that. Mientras el cheque no entra, we're in the expenses. So, to the bank, you haven't tied in a check. So, so, so long as you have a line of credit at the bank to cover your check clearing, you're okay. You have a problem, if you head over to the paper, you didn't have one.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Mr. Gonto, for, for saying that, and, and we're aware of that, you know, it's just that it gets frustrating at times.
I don't-
Let me finish. It gets very frustrating when you keep harping that we're broke, we don't have money, you're the one that took it to the media, here we are with last payroll, we, we haven't borrowed a penny, and the plan was that we were going to borrow half a million dollars this year, that was the plan. It was gonna be a two-year plan before we got out of the mess that we were in. We were able to do it in one year, thanks to the court and thanks to Ms. Guerra, because all you have been is an obstacle, Mr. Pena, you've been an obstacle. Instead of working with a county, because you are a county employee, you get paid just like I do and everyone else, you take it at heart that you want to make the county look bad, and it's very frustrating for the court. But we don't have a problem, I can assure all our employees, we have plenty of money. In fact, the bank told me, why do you need a loan? You have one-point-six in CDs at the bank, 'cause I don't wanna touch those, you know, so we're very healthy, we're, you know, we, we don't have a problem, we did have one, but again, a plan that was supposed to take two years to get out, we were able to do it in one year. I just want everyone to know that.
The CDs are designated to debt service, and you cannot get your hands on them to use them for the budget, and you know very well.
Not, not, not all of them.
All of them.
Not all of them.
You have eight thousand dollars, that's all you have.
Okay.
I don't wanna be disrespectful.
I'm not gonna argue with you, Fernando, porque, you know, it's just the way-
I don't wanna be disrespectful, but I need for you to understand-
Are there any questions for, no questions?
That the numbers speak for themselves.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Sheriff's Department? Good morning.
Commissioners, revenues for the month of August 2016, one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two.
Well, you know, based on your projections, you know, how is the jail coming in? Pretty good?
It's, it's coming in, right in there. I wish we'd get more federal inmates. I, I have had a discussion with the sheriff about, you know, hopefully as soon as the budget and everything got done, going to the marshals in Houston.
Pero, ahorita, ya se está, va a salir.
It's gonna be pretty close. It's gonna be pretty close. Do, do you recall, Ms. Guerra?
But we've been as high as, as ten, fifteen thousand. This month it's low, but it's been, still doing well.
Yeah, I, I think it should be pretty close.
So, or no, it's over.
So, or no, it's over. We need to work on a fund balance. Okay, thank you, Gento.
Thank you.
Election Administrator, Mr. Montalvo? Good morning.
Um, this is gonna be a couple of items, just to, more for informational purposes. Later on in the agenda, you will see there are some items there for the school. Just let me start, the M-100s that we have, that we count, oh, they're ten years old now, and-
The what?
They're ten years old.
The machines?
The máquina.
Yeah, the M-100s that count when we put it about. And it's time to start thinking about, you know, cost of repairing and the new stuff that's out there, because-
Yeah, rather than buy new ones.
Well, yeah, that's what we wanna do, and, and upgrade them, but, so, on Wednesday at ten, the company that, that takes care of the M-100s now is gonna bring you and show you what the new ones do. As soon as they tell us more or less what the new ones do and the cost, then I'll go see if I can find money to upgrade them, but you're gonna be surprised-
To upgrade them or buy the new ones?
Buy the new ones.
But you don't have any prices, you have the ballpark figures, nada.
I, I, I do, but I'd rather, when they're down here, they might, they might be more cooperative, 'cause when I, when I, when I went to the seminar in Austin, they just throw numbers out there.
Correct me, you know, if I'm wrong, but the, the current equipment that we have, we bought them through a lease purchase, or how was that handled?
No, at the time, when we bought those-
It was a grant.
It was a grant.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any, any possibility of a grant?
Well, that's what I'll have to check, it's part of the chapter nineteen.
But what kind of figure did they tell you?
I figure it's like five, five-
They're gonna have everything there for the commissioners.
Yeah, but it was like four thousand for the machine?
I think it's six, one hundred and six thousand.
About five thousand dollars for the-
Okay, how many machines do we need?
Ten.
Son cincuenta?
Ten, twelve at least, too.
No.
But now, they, they have a lease options, a lease-type program, but I didn't wanna commit till you saw the equipments, because if you notice, the M-100s are breaking down more often, and we, we have to have spares.
Now, it's time to buy new ones?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we can go into a lease purchase?
That, that's a possibility, but they're gonna be here at ten. The equipment is incredible, I mean, the technology now from ten years ago is-
And it's gonna be a lot better, the ones that we're gonna buy.
Yes, sir.
You try to upgrade the other ones, we don't know if they're gonna work or not.
Yeah, we, we, not only that, you know that we pay ten thousand dollars a year to maintain the ADAs, the touchscreens, and the M-100s, 'cause if we don't, and they break down, we have to-
Pues sí, pero tienen diez años, esas. Están nuevas, I don't think we need, you know. We paid a hundred thousand already in ten years for maintenance.
Again, but that was a nice grant that we got, it was a big grant. The second, just to give you a heads up, the city of Escobaris sent me, they wanted, they annexed Samarias, a small area, telling me that the total number was like four-hundred-and-ninety-two. It wasn't very much from two-twenty-seven to two, from two-ninety-seven to four-ninety-two. However, after they give me the meets and bounds, and they didn't provide me with streets and ranges, they wanna pick, they would pick, they would have to pick up like a thousand two-hundred people. I, I told them that the, the numbers don't match. If you're telling me you're only gonna pick up two-hundred people and, and the meets and bounds run you a thousand two-hundred, there has, so I, I'm sending them a letter that without streets and meets and bounds, well, not meets and bounds, but that streets and ranges, I don't know how to count the streets.
Who takes care of that?
City of Escobaris.
They say that they should take care of that, do with a map and-
Well, I, I called the state, and, and the state said they have to take care of it, they have to give you this information if they want to annex.
That's their problem.
So, just to tell you, it comes up, you know, are they calling you all to see what we can do, but I'm gonna go out with a letter today indicating that I can't help you unless you, you help me with information. And other than that, everything's going fine. I, I think we even got the sample ballots, we already got sample ballots. The most incredible thing this year is the write-ins. The write-ins for the president, they're like, let's say about fifteen or sixteen. And here, we only have one write-in locally, and that's on the constable race against, against Jaime Martinez, and there's a young man called, it's Rodriguez, is it Jorge or Juan? José, José Rodriguez, he's running as a writing against Jaime Martinez.
Any questions, tenants? Thank you, Mr. Montalvo. Federal and state programs?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The report is before you, if you all have any questions, have you all had time to review it? Have you had any other questions, or if you all wanna get with me later?
Thank you.
Okay.
On the federal stage, just to give you a heads up, commissioners, I'll, I'll send you a letter if you like, but by February seventeenth, I have, we're gonna ask for the grant for the CGE program, which is a colonial program, so if you remember it, we, we didn't have it available for like two years. Well, it's, it opens in February again, and that's gonna be for construction, sewage, but it has to be for the colonial areas. You had provided me a long list, but since then, a lot of these streets have been fixed, I guess with the last project we had with Hernandez Road. I'm gonna need, I estimate, maybe we're gonna get a hundred thousand dollars each, so I need the streets-
We need to go back, check, see what we have submitted, and double-check, see what we've done, or?
Yeah, 'cause I, I need that information.
That's on, on the colonial, it's not with the search grant?
No.
Okay.
All the search money that has been paid, or what?
Search money, yes.
Yes.
That's, great, okay.
And then, and it's important that we get those numbers, because I have to go house by house to count the numbers, who's affected. Remember, this is based, the colonial grant is play, based on, on, on income, where you can't go into-
We, we need to see what, I mean, to see, who got the list, you got it?
No, I don't have it.
It's, it's a very old list, I have the ones that we did.
But the ones that you did, so you, we can have them to go over and see what we, that was for paving, right?
It was paving.
And, and sewer.
Sewer, yes. And I can tell you what you did in two oh nine.
Let me, let me ask you something, Rudy. There's a, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a subdivision that they built up there, and it, it was, I don't know if it's registered, but these people don't have water, and they're trying to build, but there's no watering to a system, and they're all lots are sold, everything there. Is there any monies for that kind of first-time water?
For water?
You know, water supply is applying for a billion-dollar grant, they, they come to you for a leverage?
Yes, I gave them a leverage.
And I got, it looks like they're gonna-
¿Dónde es esa?
Eh, Montalvo Hill, on the other side of Montalvo Hill.
Yo ya estoy hablando de las Lomas. Las Lomas también hay.
We have that area there that, they don't have water, and I was trying to see if I could get it to the, to the county, but it's a thou, it's a ten-thousand feet, and based on what I saw, I think it runs about fifteen dollars a foot, la línea, no?
What size of line?
Well, you have to have an eight-inch line, my service code, because you always have a lot of, it's about, talking about a hundred and fifty-some or more money.
The, the water supplier would have a better chance because they sell the water to go through Water Development Board or USDA, they have money for first-time home-
Sí, yo sé esto, pero parece que cuando no hay nada, you know, te va para, for replacing lines to, and reconstruct, pero no hay nada.
But if they were grandfathered under the model rules and regulations, then they, they can, you know, Dennis, you know, you, you're more aware of that.
Is it an older subdivision?
It's an older subdivision, it's, it's right next to Montalvo Hill, and it was sort of, started off, you know, like a family partition plan, what they did.
Is that the Carizales? Is that the Carizales?
Carizales.
I know, they were here once.
No, no, eso no, eso, no, 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 Carranza, you're talking about Carranza.
Carranza, sorry.
No, this is another one up there, and there's a, they built a church on one side, a junkyard there, and a lady on the back has already been there.
They, they'd have to approve, like, there was some-
Yeah, grandfather.
...the model rules to grandfather it.
So, I don't, I checked it, but they asked me, I said, I know the water supply did apply for a million-dollar grant, I don't know if they're gonna be allowed to, to work on that or not, but-
Yeah, 'cause I know that El Tanque had asked for a lot of grants, and that's how they got those eight-inch lines way the far out there up to La Sur Nada, and way in the back.
Yeah, but that's what, you know, you're not, you're-
Yeah, I don't know who the water, who's the, your water supply?
This is first-type service, okay, I don't know, might be, come on, pardon.
Another thing that, that you were, on that dam that they're working on, Site Seven, they're about five weeks behind schedule. They were not happy, 'cause I sent them a letter, understanding that if they didn't meet the contracts, that they would have to pay any expenses that we incurred, or that the county incurred, or whatever. Now, this was with the recommendation of the engineers and the recommendation of the state, because they, they hold all the money. They told me there would be no problem, that they're probably just go ahead and let them finish, 'cause they got to July of two thousand, two thousand seventeen. However, I had to send that letter out to make sure that we're covered, to tell them, hey, we know, you're, you're five weeks behind, they already told us, you know, what, what are your plans? And so, that was another thing, and-
How, how, what is the penalty on her for, for late?
I'm, I'm not sure at this time, I didn't look into late, I just wanted to get a heads up now that they didn't finish.
I don't know, it'd be an advantage or disadvantage for us to collect any of that money on her, but I can tell you this, they have been very cooperative with me, I went up there and asked them for help, they were bringing one of those articulated trucks from the valley, and one day I went up to see, I went up there to see if they could rent me one of those trucks, and he said, well, let me, let me call, so they called the higher up, and they were bringing in a, one of those trucks from the valley, and they loaned it to me for a week, and I fixed those road up there in, it's a, the county line road, the Pinto Road, and I took my, my trucks and that, and the guy gave me the caliche, and we did a tremendous job, and they didn't charge me a penny. All I had to do is deliver it down here, but I was able to come to, it cost me five thousand dollars, but I was able to make my shortcut, the, of the old days, and drove it all the way up here, so, you know, it didn't cost me a penny, but they were very helpful, and let me borrow a truck, I mean, without that truck, I would have never been able to get those-
Yeah, I, I think, I think what Mr. Montalvo was saying, it was just a precautionary letter sent, you know, just to protect our, our interests, but the liquidated-
You have to be collected, have to be collected, but-
No, if, if, that's up to us.
It's a consideration that we should take, I'm telling you on my behalf.
We did talk to the soy and water conservation board president, and he says there would be no problems with the county since the contract, where it takes the soy and water conservation board and the county, since the contract ends in June of twenty seventeen. So, would the county, would affect the county at all? As we spoke to the president.
Yeah, so we've been communicating with everybody, but they got a little, the company got a little bit annoyed by getting the letter, but again, you have to send the letter out, there's no way around it.
You know, and I didn't, I didn't know about that, but I said, I just wanted to prove, and my, my jirama told me that they were running late, I said, well, I mean, if we can, have any consideration on that, great, I mean-
We did give them some hours, we did give them a couple more hours, they were requested, and we'll be able to go, I mean, move a little bit closer, okay? They did bring more, they did hire more personnel.
And this, the state's been really good with us, with the people from Temple, Judge, because they could have made this grant reimbursable, and they don't. They pay the contractor to direct, so it doesn't affect our budget at all.
Well, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but, you know, and certainly what the Commissioner says, I think we need to take that into account.
I mean, he was a tremendous help, like I said, when those rock trucks, oh, but I'm-
Anything else? Any questions?
No.
Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and proceed. Going on to item seven, the Commissioners have, you all have a printout on this one, this is an action item to approve adjustments, tolls for Roma International Bridge. We did a study on some of our neighboring bridges, to see where we were, if we could up some of the rates. And what we found was that we were way under in the truck traffic compared to Hidalgo, Río Grande, Reynosa Far, and Enzaldua. So the, anything with two axles and over, we were quite a bit under, I'd say about five bucks or so, on an average, less. The real big change was in the pedestrian. Pedestrian, Río Grande and Roma charge fifty cents, where everyone else charges a dollar, let's see, where is, a dollar, Reynosa Far charges three, three twenty-five. So everyone said a dollar, the only one that said fifty cents is Río Grande and us. However, Río Grande has no pedestrians, you know, 'cause you walk across, and then you have to pay twenty bucks for a taxi to take you into Camargo. So I feel that we could raise our pedestrians to a dollar, that put us even with the lowest bridge elsewhere. Like I said, Reynosa Far charges three dollars and twenty-five cents. And the reason for this change is, is we need that money, so we can balance, you know, I projected some of this money into the budget. So I'm recommending that we do that, the numbers that you all have there, and I can go ahead and read them out. For two axles, where it's six dollars, I'm recommending going to eleven, three axles, eight, recommend, in other words, going five dollars up on everything, with the exception of six axles, six axles, that goes up six bucks, and then the pedestrian going fifty cents higher, from fifty to a dollar. That's my recommendation.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The other adjustment that I looked at was the gas, and to my amazement, the gas rates have not been looked at since 94. So needless to say, we are tremendously under what other areas are charging. I felt Roma was a, was a better example, because they're, they're in our county, they do the same business we do. But I'll give you some examples of where we're at. Roma, the residential, from zero to five hundred cubic feet, they're at thirteen fifty. We, from zero to a thousand, that's twice the number of cubic feet, we're at twelve dollars. So we're less than half of what they charge. They, for five hundred and one cubic feet and over, they charge a dollar sixty-five per hundred cubic feet. We charge four dollars and thirty cents for the other two thousand, and then two dollars and two cents for every thousand. So this is in the residential. To give you some, some examples of what that would do, on the residential, some businesses. A resident here in Rio that pays sixty-five, sixty-five bucks right now for consumption, in Roma would pay a hundred and twenty and seventy-five. And most other cities are the same. So we're, that's the reason the gas department is struggling to make ends meet. Going with what I'm proposing, that same customer would go from sixty-five to a hundred and ten, which is less than Roma, but a little more equitable to what is actual, the actual expense. On the, on the commercial side, Roma, yeah, Roma, from zero to five hundred, have a base fee of thirty-two bucks. From one oh one cubic feet and over, they charge two dollars and forty-seven cents. We charge up to one thousand cubic feet, thirty-five, so that's half of what Roma charges. And from a thousand and one and over, we charge nine thirty for every thousand cubic feet. What I'm proposing is, well, again, what I'm proposing on the residential is going to twelve dollars, which is where we're at right now. So the people that are just, just the basic, they won't see any change. Five hundred and one and over, it's a dollar fifty per every hundred cubic feet. On the commercial, what I'm recommending is thirty dollars base fee, which is less than what we were charging before, and two dollars for every hundred cubic feet over five oh one. I'll give you some examples as to what it does to our commercial billing. This is one of the big stores here in Rio Grande City. The current bill that they pay us now is four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. The same business in Roma would be paying a thousand twenty-two and forty-seven cents for the same gas. What I'm proposing, they would end up paying eight hundred and forty, which is still a lot less than Roma, but more than they're paying right now. It makes it, again, more equitable.
Por qué no nos parejamos todos como Roma, sino para que no haya discriminación, ¿entiendes?
Well, you know, again-
I agree to that.
Es justo y necesario como el mejor padre.
Well, you know, but, but again, this, you know, we want to sell our gas, you know.
Todos pelones, todos puros. Tienen que pararlo, I mean, it's just square and square.
Yeah.
I think you should go in gradually.
Yeah.
Maybe next year.
Yeah, give it two or three years.
Si, con él o no.
Acabo no vas a pagar nada, tú.
Con él te go gas.
All-electric. So what's your recommendation?
Well, again, my recommendation is-
Yo estoy igual.
I, you know, I-
Todos puros, todos pelones.
I agree with, I agree with the right. We need to go in gradually, and, you know, until we-
I recommend that we go gradually, and then next year, we can talk about it again.
Got it?
That's the motion.
Okay, I'll second.
But, but that's what I'm recommending.
What you recommended.
Is that your second? Any further discussion? The proposed would be residential, zero to five hundred cubic feet, twelve dollars, five hundred and one and over, a dollar fifty for every hundred.
And more or less, how much is that gonna bring in, Judge?
This will bring in close to two hundred thousand.
No, but-
Commercial, and really, the bulk, the bulk of the money comes in from commercial. Zero to five hundred, Dennis, thirty dollars. Five oh one and over, two dollars a cubic foot.
All right.
I did call for the vote, no?
No.
Okay, Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item nine is on the point-operated amusement machines. We're also recommending some changes to that. I guess I get stuck with giving the recommendation. Really, it's pretty much what we had last year. With the exception of, I guess, one of the big things is, is the rates. If you look at page six, on the amusement machines, one of the recommendations is breaking it up into four instead of five, the way we had it before. One, one through four, I'm sorry, one through five, six through thirty, thirty-one through sixty, and sixty-one through a hundred. Also, last year, you know, you all had authorized to go ahead and do quarter payments. We're recommending fifty percent at the beginning, and fifty percent on April the first, to pay for, for the, that's the, the application fee. Of course, there's another fee of fifteen dollars per machine. Hours of operation, ten to midnight, all the way through, that was also a slight change.
On seven days?
I'm sorry?
Four, seven days.
Yeah, on seven days. There will be a team of people that will go out and make sure that it's approved, a team from, of course, the planning department, the code enforcer, making sure the buildings are adequate, fire marshal, you know, different people will be going out, and all of them have to agree to it, in order for permits to be issued. But that's, that's pretty much the changes that were made. Everything else is pretty much the same. So, again, that's what we're recommending, it's up to you. You all have any questions?
No. I'll move over to Bass.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item ten is an action item, and this is to approve a zero tolerance towards domestic violence proclamation. Mr. Canales, do you have the proclamation?
No, Your Honor, it's in your packet, I believe. We've asked for this in previous years, Your Honor, it's regarding domestic violence, and taking the attitude that the Commissioners' Court does not, has a zero tolerance towards domestic violence. We're asking the Court to sign that, Your Honor.
I very strongly recommend that we do this, you know, it's, like I've said many times before, it's really eye-opening to see the amount of domestic violence that's not only in our county, but state and nationwide. And I do want to thank at this time, Mr. Canales' office, and the ladies that work on that, I think they do a very good job.
I might take, violence includes everybody, men and women, everything.
Men and women, yes, Commissioners, even though normally, we think of it in terms of men, male on female, in our county, we do have sometimes females that are very dominant over the male spouse, and do in fact hurt them, yes.
I'm telling you, I've heard some of those, you know, when they, when they, these people, it's kinda hard to send them to Mujeres Unidos, but you know, because it's Mujeres Unidos, you gotta send a guy up there, with Mujeres Unidos, but-
Well, that's a misnomer, we've oftentimes, we call the project, people call our project Mujeres Unidos, however, that's not the official title of it, but we call it that, because that's what everybody knows from the valley. We are a rural county, but we are large in land, and we have had instances, Commissioners, where we have had spouses that have been doused, literally completely covered with gas, where their husbands about to light them on fire, where they run off into the woods, and literally live in the, in a monte for three days. We've also had some federal agents that have tried to throw their, their current girlfriends and boyfriend, current girlfriend or spouse into a barbecue pit to try to cook them. We have had some tremendous-
That guy released.
Tremendous, there are some very horrible cases we've had, the loss of life, recently, a couple of years back, three women that were killed by a husband who was stalking them, they were, he killed the mother, the, her, I'm sorry, our victim, her mother and her friend that was helping her to get out of the violence, so we, and then eventually killed himself. We try to do what we can for these women, oftentimes, women and their children, that we've also had many times, that we've had children that have been abused by the parent or the uncle. And that's what this program is essentially about, it's about them. The ladies put many long hours into it. This proclamation is just, October is Domestic Violence Month, and we would like to prevent, Domestic Violence Prevention Month, and we would like the Commissioners' Court to adopt the zero tolerance policy. What's properly planned?
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item eleven is an action item, and this is on a joint agreement between Rio Grande City Consolidated School District and County of Star for the November eighth election.
Yes. Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners, I'm Ida Gonzalez-Garcia, I'm gonna, I'm acting as the early voting clerk, and also as a deputy administrator there for the election for the school district. On Tuesday of last week, we had a board meeting, and we went ahead and we approved a joint election agreement. It was approved by the board, and I presented it to your election administrator on Wednesday before the deadline for putting it on the agenda. So at this time, I'm requesting that we, that you all enter into this joint election agreement with the school district. Primarily, we're asking for the sites of El Cenizo Pavilion Park Building and La Victoria Community Center. We're asking that we be able to, it would be separate in the sense, as far as us having our own election judges and everything else. We know that the last time you all reduced the sites, you did have at one point in time El Cenizo, on one of your board, or one of your Commissioners' Court meetings, you had four sites, and now you reduced it to one, and you indicated that it was because of finances, and I can appreciate that. So at this point in time, we've also indicated that we would be willing to pay, we have to rent that facilities, those two facilities for, for those two weeks. These two facilities are gonna be used during Election Day, and, already, so we just wanna use them a little bit earlier than just Election Day. So at this time, that's what we're requesting at this point in time.
I don't think there's any need to pay rent, those businesses have provided to provide services to the, to our constituents out there in our precinct, and it's just right for them to be serviced, so they can come in and deposit their votes as a way to do so. So, in that respect, I do so move that we approve.
I have a motion, is there a second? Is there a second? It dies for lack of second.
Well, I may inform the Court, even though the Commissioners' Court did not prove it, they will be used, they'll be available, to be used, because I am the custodian of those, and they're for that purpose, and they will be open. And if the Court later on wants to go shut them down, let them do so, but at this time, they will be used. I am the custodian of those, and I have the right to go into contract with you all.
I believe you're wrong, Commissioner. Mr. Canales, you want to shed any light on that?
Judge, I have not entered into research on this matter. I have just personally looked at it, and the only ones that are authorized would be-
It's a court, it's correct.
That's information that I've received from other county adjurys of the state, but I have not researched on myself.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I think this is a civil rights violation of the people to deprive them to come to vote because of the request of Mr. Basilio Villarreal and Mr. Pino López, which is totally wrong. And I will file, I will, and I will ask the school to join me and file a suit against this Commissioners' Court, a civil, a civil suit for civil rights violations, to deprive our citizens to vote. And you're very aware, Mr. Canales, that it's wrong, that they're depriving the people, but unfortunately, you have to represent Mr. Basilio Villarreal and Mr. Pino López, that's why you're judging that way.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, without your understanding-
They voted anywhere else? No, pero por eso tengo-
Yeah, but you're saying, you're saying that they're being violated, their rights are being violated, porque no pueden agotar, only if there are buildings there.
Well, with all due respect-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we need, we need control.
I'd like to respond, Commissioner, I don't, I am representing the county's interest, Commissioner, not any one particular person that is not a member of this Commissioners' Court. My opinion is based solely and squarely on representing you, Commissioner Peña, Commissioner Science, Commissioner Cantú, County Judge of this matter. I take issue, Commissioner, with you saying that, that I'm representing other individuals, I have not. I am simply stating what you've asked, and, further, Commissioner, there are public buildings, the school district owns several public buildings, this is a school election, they can have other public buildings, which they can choose.
Well, let me tell you, let me tell you, last election, remember, let's go back.
Well, Your Honor, let me tell you, last election, remember, let's go back. It is very simple, that you, we opened up El Cenizo and an extra one in La Victoria to accommodate the election for the district attorney's office, thinking that it would better the opponent of Omar Escobar, and it sure didn't happen. Now you want to cut them down so they can make, make it harder for our people to come and vote all the way down here? I think it's wrong.
See, this, this is the reason that, that I'm very hesitant about approving this. The school has schools over there, they can use their schools. I don't want to get tight, get caught in the middle of a political power struggle. I, I think the reason that they want to use this is for political advantage. Another group doesn't want us to use it because it's their disadvantage. So I believe, I'd rather leave the county out of it completely. And if you want, you, you all have schools in that area. Open them up in your schools.
Well, and I agree with you, Judge Vera. I think you all, as a Commissioners Court, can decide whatever you all want to decide. I can't force you to vote my way or vote in the school district's way, but what I do find interesting is that before we had our board meeting, your county attorney sent us a letter to advise us that the only voting place was the, the county courthouse. Now, with all due respect...
That was under my advice.
Well, Judge, and my situation is, is that no letter was sent to anybody else with regards to that. No other, there are other political subdivisions that are having their elections. I think that was premature. As a matter of fact, we took it as a threat at this point in time, and the Attorney General and the Secretary of State encouraged that we do joint election agreements. We've never done a joint election agreement within this community. So now, when we're first trying to do and follow the rules and do everything like we're supposed to, all of a sudden, somebody says, no, we can't do that, and we're telling you beforehand, before you even have board approval, that, by the way, the only site will be the county courthouse. How would you take it, Your Honor, if, if the school district were to dictate what sites you, as a county, could use?
Well, that's what I'm stating, Judge. I did send a letter off, and I stated what the Commissioners Court had already passed, what was in fact a passed motion by this Commissioners Court. I don't understand what she's extrapolating from my letter that was sent via recitation of the fact that this Commissioners Court had already done it, and it's already late in the game.
Well, and, and if that was the case, why not send it, as soon as you all were done with Commissioners Court, send everybody a letter and say, you know what, the only voting site is going to be the courthouse. Why do it right before a school board meeting where the agenda item indicates that we're entering to a joint election agreement? Once again, we're going into the violation of our constitutional rights, but that's okay. There's another option that we can use. And I have already advised Mr., the election administrator, that if you don't approve this contract, which I anticipated, then the other alternative would be to do what we call an election service agreement. And on that election service agreement, I don't need the vote of Commissioners Court. I just need your election administrator, who is mandated by law, to sign and enter into it. That's it.
Since you brought my name into this, number one, I am the election administrator, but I ain't going to play no puppet for anyone. Not you and no one. You know Don well, the only reason you're doing this is because you're arguing over these things, which is silly children's play.
And I agree with you, Mr. Montalvo.
You can do whatever you want, you can call whoever you want, you can call the governor. I ain't going to play this game with anyone.
And that's fine, sir.
If you want me to be election administrator, step aside and I'll go over there and run the election.
And I'm not asking you, sir.
So don't tell me that you're going to put me in a corner and tell me to shut up because I'm the election administrator. You've got, either way, either you let me run it, or you go and take the court.
I'm just, I'm just following the law as it indicates, Mr. Montalvo, and the only reason that I have also advised you that, with regards to this joint election agreement, as you all well know, that when we had our primary, the site that had the most problems, the most issues, was this site, the courthouse. We had M-100s that kept breaking brown, breaking down, and no fault, I'm not blaming Mr. Montalvo or his staff, they accommodated us to the best of their ability. But we did have issues, to the point where we weren't sure, if we had to put another M-100, where were we going to put it?
Well, I think this is mute because it didn't have a second, so there shouldn't be any discussion to begin with.
They will be offered by me. And if they want to shut them down, let it be so, and we'll find out what happens. They'll be waiting.
Well, again, Commissioners, both... Just for the record, just for the record, those buildings do not belong to you, they belong to the County of Star, of which the court has jurisdiction. So if the court says they cannot be used for something, they cannot be used for anything. Why do you think they ask the court for approval? Because we have to approve it, not an individual Commission. It's a court. Now, you can go ahead and try and open them up, you know, the sheriff will probably have to go and shut it down. And the sheriff will probably have to go shut it down, because that's the wish of the court.
We're ready for that.
Okay, very well. Item twelve, I think that's also mute, or I'll, I'll go ahead and take it. It's an action item to approve two county sites for the school early vote, which is El Cenizo and La Victoria. Is there a motion to that?
I do move.
Is there a second? Is there a second? It dies for lack of second.
Thank you, Judge.
Item thirteen is an action item, and this is to approve the payment or refund to Carlos Aguión of sixty-seven dollars that was paid to Mr. or Judge Aguián when it should have been paid to the municipal court. I think that's in, in order that it should be refunded.
Move to pass.
Is there a second? Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item fourteen is an action item, and this is to approve request from our DA Escobar to open new bank account for funding related to victim coordinator and liaison grant. Ms. Guerra, is that in order?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. We're just asking for approval this morning for this account. It's a hundred percent funded, and it is for training services that we provide to victims and community events, so we're asking for approval this morning.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to pass.
Okay, moved in second. Discussion. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Item fifteen is a action item, and this is to award catering services based on bids.
These are for the, for the nutrition centers and the cost of meals that you all pay, and we got it by the centers there. You look, and that's what the bid were, that we submitted. Like in Rio Grande, we only have one. And San Siro, you had two. You had Lanes, and then you had Los Tejanos. In Roma, you had Los Tejanos, and you had...
Bella's.
Bella's Kitchen, and...
San Esposo.
San Esposo. In Roma, at San Esro. And Bella's Kitchen had, was the lowest bid.
I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve of Los Tejanos in Rio, Lane in San Isidro, and Bella's Kitchen for Roma and San Esro. Move in second. Discussion. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Items sixteen through twenty-three are budgeted.
Very good.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item twenty-four is a action item requesting Commissioners Science to purchase a catfish backhoe from Portupia.
Unfortunately, my, my backhoe's are dirty, the repairs are, I picked it up by you with, oh, caterpillar. It'll be...
Did you fry doggy or no?
Ah, yes, I did. They were no more fire. I'm just here. Oh, no, I went for the, for the, I wanted caterpillar.
The lizard or...
Brand new.
Yeah, but I mean, you don't have to put enough to...
My board and, I mean, the ear, early.
Move to pass. Second. Second, discussion. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Motion carries. Item eleven forty-five pursuant to section five five one, section four, we are not going to accept a session to discuss board of salary. So, we're back in open session, under orders, salaries, motion.
We'll move in with the correction of the changes in the operating rate.
Second. Moving in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Honorable fair, please. Aye. Motion carries. Second, Honorable fair, please. Aye. Motion carries. Second, Honorable fair, please. Aye. Motion carries. Second.